Alright, so let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, January 6th to order. If I could ask everybody to stand please and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Alright, evening, roll call please.
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Delly Paul.
Here.
Zach Rudy.
Here.
Scott Moose.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Okay, so we have everybody. Our agenda tonight, we will have an education presentation called Course Enrollment Meets DLF. I'll have Mike here after me. No real president's report today, we'll have an update from our plethora of school board representatives. We're always anxious to hear what's going on in the school. Superintendent's report, looks like a long one.
I'll be brief.
I've heard that before. We'll open it up for public comment if there is anybody. We'll approve the consent vote which was reviewed earlier in the month in committee. We have updates from program and personnel and facilities. Steven, nothing?
From property, correct?
Just that we're gonna have a meeting in February 1st at 6:00 PM.
Okay, I saw that.
Over at the district office.
In the notes. Alright, Cito? Nothing? IASB? Nothing? And just one question on the executive session. Is there any need to review the closed session minutes tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, they're in the packet, okay. Given that there's not, then we will approve that in the superintendent's report to keep them confidential. Okay, so let's start with our educational presentation.
Go ahead, Mika.
Happy tonight to have a team from Vernon Hills High School talking about how course enrollment met DLF.
Do I need to speak into the microphone?
That'd be helpful, probably.
Okay. Perfect. Hello, everyone. We want to thank you guys for having us here today for this really exciting collaborative experience that we are really embarking on at Vernon Hills High School with the collaboration of our, the new tech coaches that we have here along with the LST. And we're going to really talk to you about the experience that we're having with our new registration process. And so here today, we have all of us tech coaches along with Greg Stilling and Becky Belido to represent the LST.
So our story of collaboration starts when I had the opportunity to be dean for the day. And Greg borrowed from LHS the idea of setting up a schedule to really kind of experience what the LST goes through. And so that brought me to a counselor meeting. And I was sitting there hearing them talk about how they scheduled classes and how they were gonna hand out a piece of paper to each kid. And of course, the tech coach and me started, you know, saying, hey, have you ever thought of going digital with this? Instead of handing out a sheet of paper. And so that's how we got, you know, talking about this idea.
And one of the things that leads us to, you know, thinking this way is that, you know, every year, the district sends, like twice a year, staff members to a Google summit where, it's out of Wisconsin, where we kind of meet with other educators and talk about, you know, how do we bring technology into our classroom. What's nice about this summit though, is that it's not really just a technology conference. It's a, it's a conference put on by educators who are using technology in their classroom to kind of enrich student learning. So going to this conference every year kind of gives us these ideas of what we can bring back to our schools. We kind of report back to each other. And now we're even having some people going up and trying to present at these conferences. It's a great place to be because we're really focused on, you know, bringing in higher order thinking skills and how we can innovate and use technology to kind of bring those to our students.
Hi, I'm Becky. I'm a counselor here. And I was honored when Greg asked me to go to the Google summit. And he might have thought I was being facetious with him when I was like, really? You know? And that was because I had heard such great things from my peers who had gone before. And those were all teachers, so I was the first LST member. And I had the unique opportunity to check out all of these variety of sessions and see which ones might pertain most to student support services. And I would attend those and think of ways that I could bring that information back to our counselors and social workers, et cetera.
So as Chris said, with the Google summit being a tech conference, one of the beautiful parts is that the focus is not necessarily on the X's and O's of the technology, but the application of it and how, how it can be done in an innovative way where we can get things moving towards a higher order thinking skills, both for the kids and the teachers and, and the support staff and administration. And one of the sessions that I got to go to, this time with my technology coach hat on as opposed to just a classroom teacher hat, was a session on Google Classroom and how it could be used for more than just classroom teachers with their respective students. How it could be used and leveraged on an administrator level with teachers, on teams, and then in a, in a support staff in LST arena with students and teachers as teams or members of their classrooms. So that kind of spurred that thinking that that would be a perfect tool for us to use to manage the workflow of going digital with the class enrollment for next year.
So after I returned from the Google summit, it was the joke in the LST that like any technology question I was now qualified to answer, which actually I'm not. And Greg and I were talking about ways that we could maybe utilize technology, Google in particular, throughout our enrollment processes. It was approaching. And after attending the Google summit, I, you know, thought of a lot of different tools that might be able to be used. But I wanted to go to the HATS back upstairs to see our tech coaches. And I talked to Chris about what I needed, what kind of functionality I needed from the technology. And he was able to brainstorm what technology would fit the best.
And after talking to Sean about, you know, what he experienced at the Google summit, you know, he kind of brought back some ideas, you know, and after I'd been using Google Classroom for years as a teacher, we really realized that this is a great blended learning kind of management tool where it's a great way of pushing out documents to kids, getting those documents shared back with teachers very easily and effectively. And it's a great way for teachers and students to collaborate, so why can't we bring that collaboration to our counselors and our LST members?
So essentially what happened was, as counselors, we have a few times a year where we need a captive audience. And that's hard to find without disrupting instructional time. And so what the Google Classroom allowed us to do was to minimize interfering with instructional time and get all of these documents in a nice package sent out to all of our students at the same time. It also makes it so that students from home can, with their parents, access all that material. They don't have to wonder if they left one of the sheets at school or they lost a sheet. It's all there at all times.
So in one of our meetings, we were talking about this idea. And as I've attended some of the luncheon learns that the hotspot puts on, they, you know, they've given presentations on Google Classroom, Pairdeck, various things that our teachers are using all the time in their classrooms. So I thought the best idea for us as an LST to kick this off would be just to go straight to the hotspot. So we held several of our LST meetings in the hotspot where they have their, you know, their computers, their big TV screens where we could put what we needed up on the screen. And these guys could take us through how to set up our Google Classroom. So Becky's 300 students are all in her Google Classroom. And like she said, she pushed out this information to them now, but now that it's set up, she could push out whatever information she wants in the future. So it really worked out great for us.
So maybe it's just me. And, excuse me, Denver Day Lamp, so what if hotspot? Am I the only one?
No, I was one of the students.
It's the room in which we operate. It's a cheesy name that we came up with for the room.
What was that again?
It's the cheesy name that we came up with for the room in which we run our tech coaches.
In the school.
In the school, it's just right down the hallway. Yes.
So this is me, meeting with a student. So far, I've enrolled a bunch of juniors. And what those meetings look like are just like the pictures. The students, I tell them, all they need to bring are their Chromebooks with them. And usually, the student and I are both inside the document where they have put in what classes they're thinking of taking next year. At the same time, if a student has had a question ahead of time before a meeting, I can access the student's document to see what, like, they have mapped out, which is something unique. Usually, they would have had to make an appointment, made sure I was in my office, that we could sit together and talk about it together. I can do this a lot more efficiently and effectively in less time. And so I have found that students have been more prepared, that their sheets have been completed before meeting with me, which wasn't always the case with paper. I don't know how to explain that other than, you know, they have their technology at their fingertips all the time. So I think, you know, when they think of it, they can just go on there. And it's not like they need to go back to their folder that's in their locker. So, so it's been working really.
So in light of all these things, I think it's, it's evident that each one of these COGS really becomes greater as a part of the whole. And so we really need to thank you guys for being, being the impetus, for being the catalyst, for getting these things going, starting all the way back at the, the DLF, the rollout, getting the one-to-one Chromebooks and that sort of setting the stage and setting the foundation for getting the, the tech coaches and the hotspot up and running and allowing them and us the autonomy to get those things moving. Sending us to that professional development, the Google Summit and other things that have just allowed us to obviously go and come back and collaborate, not just sit on those ideas, but come back and really share those in a, in a different manner, which really ends up creating this environment, this atmosphere where there is a willingness to try something different as shown by the LST. And hopefully, as we move into the 21st century of technology with a lot of these things, it's something that we can do even more. And so we hope to see a lot of that in the future.
Alright, so in closing, I would thank you guys again and ask if you have any other questions about the hotspot or anything else.
I, I'll just start by making a quick comment. It's, it's very interesting to me to see people using technology in, in, I don't want to say unique ways. So there's one thing to have some kind of bleeding edge technology and G-Wiz kind of gadgets and that type of thing. But it's another thing to take existing technologies that are really intended for something else and have the vision to see how that could be used for an application like this and be so effectively used and so conveniently used. And it's just, that's where it really makes a difference. And without all the students having their Chromebooks and without having this environment completely around the campus, you know, everyone has access, everyone has, has this ability. It's just a, it's just a very cool and satisfying thing to see. It's a very, I congratulate you, that's really good. Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, and I thank you guys too. And part of why these guys are so valuable is we have someone staffed in the hotspot, which is really our digital learning drop-in center every period of the day. So if a teacher wants to stop in with an idea that they're not quite sure how to pull off, that's where these guys come in.
Yeah, I think we need to field trip to the hotspot.
Yeah. Right down the hall.
They have a coffee machine.
You go better. I think the, I think the students at LHS called it a really cool teacher's lounge. And it was quickly corrected, it definitely is. So I, I have just a few questions. First of all, I echo Jim's comments and say thanks. You know, we can send you guys to all the professional development courses in the world and we can buy all the technology that exists out there, but if you don't come back and enthusiastically embrace it, it's kind of a waste of time. And so it's very uplifting to me to see this. And I know I've talked to people in other schools, especially students, and I don't see the same kind of passion around this thing. You know, you'll be, I'll, I'll be with some kids from some other local school, they're, yeah, I hear you guys all got Chromebooks. Yeah, I know. What are you using for? Well, not much, you know? And so it's really great to see what you, I mean, the transformation in the last, not even year, half a year's been incredible. Okay? But here's my hard question, and it could lead to one or two others. What is it that you think we should, we should be doing that you're afraid to ask us to support? I was looking at you, Sean.
I was trying to.
But I mean, seriously, what, what is it? I mean, here's the follow-up questions. And the questions are what holds us back and what would we get out of it if we did? So there's all three, I played all my cards. But what do you think? I mean.
So one thing that.
Don't be so shocked.
Right, right. That's never been my problem. So one thing that, kind of speaking to what, you know, you were impressed by is the fact that we are implementing here. And, and one of those is the Google Summit. And when I, I've been able and fortunate to be, you know, gone twice now. And I joke with people that you're gonna drink the Kool-Aid, like you're gonna drink the Google Kool-Aid when you come back. And it's because it's a different environment. It's not just someone who doesn't understand tech. It's all teachers who are actually doing this. So that is one thing that I wish personally that more people could experience the Google Summit because, and I think Becky is an example of that, of someone who didn't really feel that comfortable with tech, but goes and just gets excited about, wait a second, I can do that, you know? And I don't need to go purchase new tech, I can reinvent what I already have. And for, for me, I think that I would want everyone to experience the Google Summit. I mean, that's what I would want on my wish list. But I know, you know, that's something that I think the rest of us can speak to as well, is how great that conference in particular is, so.
How many people attend that? Not enough from here, but I mean, imagine it's a national thing or something?
Yeah, so they're located in different regions. So this is the Midwest Google Summit. So they're from states from all over. So, you know, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, Illinois.
And is it, is it an annual event or three, four times a year?
Yeah, it happens twice. It happens once in the fall and then once in the spring. And we were, a group of us went first, went in 2011 with John, and, and we kind of dabbled in it a little bit there. And now having the one-to-one and seeing what we can do and having the tech coaches in the hotspot, we see even more of what can happen, you know, through that. You know, when you learn from teachers who are doing versus what they think would, would work, really has made like the difference for us, so.
Yeah, I, I think.
We're in no hurry.
It used to be just a once-a-year conference. And a couple of years ago, they, it used to be only in the fall. And, and two years ago, they, they sold out before noon on the day that, that it opened up. And so they decided that year to have another one in the spring. And so then they've been following that model ever since, just because of its popularity. But it's really, like Chris said, it's not so much about the technology as it is about the culture that is there when you're there and, and the, the, just the ingenuity that everybody brings and the experiences that come in to that conference on those, on those few days. I think, going back to your, your question of what, you know, what you guys could be doing that you're not doing, or maybe more of, to help us spread this culture even more to as many of our teachers as possible so they can have the greatest impact, you know, at the district level. And, and we're getting ready to roll this out in a couple of weeks. But just as much support that, that the district level can show for the buildings and the teachers who embrace the, the usage of all of this, this newness, right? So we're gonna, we're gonna be rolling out a new professional development, a real-time self-paced professional development system that the district is, is gonna recognize through the D-128 university credit system. And that's really exciting. But that's a perfect example of, you know, this is gonna be the first time that that's happening. But that's, I think that would be a perfect example as far as a wish list, maybe, maybe more of that. And just knowing that you guys would continue to support that type of stuff to help us on a daily basis get it spread out as much as possible so it can have the greatest impact on the kids.
And really help us as much as possible, like us as technology coaches, even really supporting us, has been amazing. And even just creating these positions has been awesome. So just that continued reassurance and support from, from you guys for our positions.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, you know, I think of the people up here, I'm probably in the best position to say, just funding the hotspot and the tech coaches. And I feel like, you know, amongst the LST and my people, they're kind of like a hidden gem. And I'm a little afraid, like, I like to, you know, tell everyone how great they are, but I'm also like, I don't want them stealing my time away from these guys. But no, but really, this wouldn't have happened. It's really hard to get people who've been doing something the same way for a long time to try something new. And part of the reason we were able to come up with the idea and implement it in like a month's time was really because any fears or questions that we had when we were in the hotspot for our meetings, like the tech coaches could answer our questions. You know, we could think of all the possible problems, but we don't know that like there's easy ways around that using the technology. And so I would say the fact that they had the flexibility to help not just teachers, but counselors and the building as a whole was awesome. I think it also was great, like sending the summit, sending a representative from different departments. It allowed for collaboration that happened organically. And I really think that that's us all going together this fall, like for me and what's happened here, like kind of started there, just discussions of different ways that technology could be improving our counseling department.
So I think, I think Pat asked also, how many people attended each of these meetings?
You mean the summit?
Yes, the summit.
So how many went?
Are you asking from the district or like total attendance?
Total. How many crowds is your mix?
Oh, how many? There's.
Fifteen hundred, two thousand-ish?
It's a really nice, like I've been to multiple conferences and I can say I definitely didn't feel like the smartest person in the room. And you can't always say that, you know? And it was really well-run. It was at the Wilderness Resort. And they just were well-staffed. I mean, it was a very well-oiled machine.
So a quick question for this, is this a pilot or are all the students involved in this yet for this year?
This is all our students except incoming freshmen.
Okay.
So this was all the students we could, well.
And outgoing students.
You don't get to take classes here next year.
Darn.
Yeah, we can't ask them questions because they don't take classes here next year. So this is enrollment for all our students coming back next year.
That's a big rollout, very quickly. It's very cool, thank you.
And one last question, do we have any plans to, I'll say, publish or present? Any of the, because there's a number of things on our whole one-on-one initiative that's probably good material.
So I have plans. I've told my hotspot friends that we're going national with this because I am telling you, I'm a member of the Lake County Counselors Association. And when I told people that we went, that they like sent me to the summit, most of them hadn't even heard of the summit. And I think there's a lot that is new out there for teachers, but not necessarily like with enrollment and registration. And there really is ways that we're making our lives easier, making the situation better for students. And so like I've talked to my Counselors Association about the fact that, you know, this might be a topic that we could bring up at one of those. But I do think from like a counselor's standpoint, it's definitely something that we could look to in the future. I don't know if you guys have any.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's several. I mean, even if it's just the way you're navigating through the cultural change. I mean, I think that in and of itself is a whole subject. I think even just the whole rollout and logistics and how we manage that and how we went about choosing it. There's a whole, there's a number of good buckets here that I think could be really helpful. I mean, frankly speaking, why shouldn't somebody else go learn all the lessons we already learned? I mean, we paid the price, why don't we just kind of share the wealth?
So ICE is Illinois Computer Educators Group, and they have a huge annual conference coming up here. And Amanda and I are doing a three-hour, half-a-day workshop down there at ICE that we are accepted for, just giving, giving our entire technology coach and hotspot rollout. You know, we will be talking about the one-to-one a bit, but it'll have more focus on our team and our philosophy and how we've integrated that with our teachers.
I hope to see you down there.
Thursday.
Wes, I mean, I know we said thanks, but I, I always appreciate these kinds of things in particular because you guys are busy in your regular day job. And then you do this kind of stuff too. And you know what? I really think those are the things that I'll call differentiate the teachers and staff that we have here from a lot of other places. So in case you don't think that's recognized, I just want you guys to know how much we do recognize and how much we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I said it just kind of looked routine, so I'll keep in mind. Okay.
Can I just make one quick comment? Something like that is so impressive.
No, it is.
We're, we're, what, six months into our formal rollout of the learning, the digital learning strategy? And already we're finding very effective, creative ways to use that technology now that everyone has it in their hands. It's just, that was very, very cool.
Well, we actually had planned for you an, an update from the Libertyville LED Center and the Vernon Hills Hotspot for March. But this came up as something new that they had done and they wanted to get it in front of you right away. So we, we have Libertyville LED Center coming in March at the board meeting to present there too. So we'll get some more information from both schools. But this was just so new and fresh, we wanted to get that.
And it's funny how it could be as, as simple as you give them a form they don't want to fill it out or they don't have it, it's in the locker, the backpack, or the dog ate it, whatever. And they may be like, they just know, like I've got five minutes, I can flip it open, I can do my thing. You know? And it's, I, I think there's a lot to that.
Can't leave one.
Yeah, the dogs aren't gonna eat the.
Right. Can I just ask a question for clarification? So like the hotspot and the LHS LED Center are for, researches for the teachers? And the coaches are for the teachers, not for the students?
It's kind of an informal environment where they can huddle and, you know, find a colleague that can help them through that. It's just really a great.
But the people using it are these guys. Teachers, yeah. Thank you. There's a Lit Tech in there every period, so a teacher can always come. Yeah. Yeah, it's neat.
No, it's really good. Okay. Let's see, what do we have? Student reports. Student reports.
Okay, so I'm covering athletics first. So the dance team just received first place at sectionals on Saturday. It's $2 on the team. And then they have state this weekend, so that's really exciting. Girls bowling won their division at the Wakanda Invite this past weekend. LHS hosted the first annual Jack Lip alumni tournament where LHS alumni came and played basketball in honor of Jack Lip. Ice Cats hosts a fan appreciation night on January 30th. And then LHS and VHS Fancers won three gold medals at the 2016 JV Championships this weekend. Again, Ice Cats is playing Niles this Wednesday. And then spring sports are starting soon, so we practice in triads coming up.
Well, not soon enough.
I know.
Spring, that is.
I know. So, I know, you'd be surprised how early like into winter season they start practicing. Like I know La Crosse has been having before-school practices already. And a lot of like, my brother's trying out for volleyball and they've opened gyms. So it's pretty cool how much they prepare for that. And then academics, we just had finals and now we're on to semester two. So a lot of seniors take one semester classes because that's kind of what's offered. So people, it's kind of like the beginning of a school year again for seniors. And teachers and students are both getting acclimated to the new classes and schedule, I guess. And then on February 9th, I think it's during third period, all students are taking the Illinois Youth Survey that studies social norms and it provides information about drug and alcohol usage within our school. And then LHS juniors Ashley Junkin, Morgan Paul, Anna Lilidall, oh yeah, and Anna Lilidall had works published by the website and magazine Teen Inc. And then seniors Nia McLendon and Danielle Verba were honored with being placed on the Daily Herald's Lake County Leadership Team and Lake County Leadership Team Honorable Mention List respectively.
Any buzz in the hallways about next year's calendar?
Next year's calendar? Oh, is that like finals before break? I've heard that people are super excited about that. I'm kind of jealous, I didn't get it, but I think that's gonna be a good thing. It'll make break relax.
How are teachers feeling about it?
I've heard. They probably feel like it's been in the waters for a while. I think their greatest concern is, is can we even out the semesters? And we've done a pretty good job of calendar-wise.
That's exactly.
My mom's a teacher at LHS, I don't know if anyone knows that. But she's talked to me about it. And I think she's pretty excited because I know that like during winter break, she never really got to relax either because she's like writing finals and stuff. And I think she's excited to like get it over with before and then actually have break to completely relax. Because I know sometimes she'd like go in during break and write her finals, but now she just has her whole break. So that's nice.
So tell your mom we were thinking about it.
Yeah, I will.
And moving on with fine arts at LHS, members of our various bands traveled to Indianapolis and Nashville over the Martin Luther King Jr. Daylight Long Weekend. And the concert band and jazz band performed and received clinics and master classes at both Butler University and Belmont. So that's, just like seeing pictures from some people I know, they all played at a fun time. And then theater will put on its next play, Call the Witness for the Prosecution, on February 12th and 13th at 7:30 in the LHS auditorium. So that's, actually sounds pretty intriguing. I like court cases. Moving on to extracurriculars, student council is in planning for our turnabout dance that will be on February 20th. Most, like, we've been working on it for a few weeks now. And the theme is out of this world and so it'll be a space and black light kind of theme. So it'll be really interesting to see how that turns out. We're also, and for student council, preparing for our spring like charity events and fundraising, which includes our color run, which we started last year to, and to donate to an organization called Safe Water of Kenya. And last year we actually raised over forty-five hundred dollars for that organization. So that provides safe and clean drinking water for children in Kenya, which is really fun to work with. And our school newspaper, Drops of Ink, it recently released like their first online publication in addition to their monthly like paper, paperbacks and printed copies. So that's just another sign of our school going digital. Our Link Crew has just started a new tradition called the Link Crew Legacy, where our leaders or junior and senior leaders can nominate a freshman in their group that has shown qualities of being like an outstanding freshman student. So it was a, I heard it was a really nice ceremony and a very like nice way to recognize some of our freshmen by our upperclassmen. So it works to build unity among our different classes. LHS also hosted the 2016 Jazz Fest on January 21st with bands from Highland and Oak Grove Middle Schools attending. We, Libertyville High School also has a new club for both students and staff to read and discuss their favorite books and literature. So it's the LHS Book Club and they'll hold their first meeting this Friday, January 29th after school, where they'll be discussing John Green's Paper Towns. And last Wednesday, students at our school wore our Stand Together t-shirts with the sign saying Stay Strong for Brett to support LHS graduate Brett Becker, who was recently injured in a skiing accident. So we're all hoping for a safe and speedy recovery. And it was just really moving to see all like many, many kids coming out to support him and his family. ACE, Athletes Committed to Excellence recently held a parent pledge night where about a hundred members of our ACE club committed to a drug and alcohol-free lifestyle and performance. The students signed a pledge and with their own personal creed with their parents in attendance to lead as role models in our athletic community. And lastly, Slant of Light, our school's literary and arts magazine. Our deadline is approaching next week for submissions and I like being an editor in the magazine, I, we've already seen like a significantly large amount of submissions coming from our students of both artwork and writing from compared to last year. So that's very exciting to work with this year. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to Vernon Hills news. So we'd like to recognize both Emily and Zach because they were named Lake County Leadership Team Honorable Mentions. Also, one of the recent VHS alumni, Jessica Chiarela, a graduate of 2005, has just released a new novel, And Again, which is really cool to see our alumni doing great things. Also, there is IMEC State Ensembles, which is the 2016 Illinois Music Education Conference, and that takes place this coming weekend in Peoria. And a major part of the conference is the All-State and Honors Choir Band and Orchestra Ensembles. And the conference begins tomorrow night and students and faculty will be leaving tomorrow afternoon around 2:00 PM. And we have a lot of students who are actually part of that, which includes Steffi Benito, Scott Kinnear, Zach, Finn Li-Lao, Sari Lee, Lucy Wu, Isaiah Lu, Spencer Moffett, Leslie Munn, Ariel Cha, Adam Lee, Calvin Yun, and Grace Lim, which is actually a lot of students. So we're very proud of them for making that. And then also JSA, our debate club at school, is going to host a voter registration event for those seniors who are going to finally get to vote in the next election, which is pretty exciting because we'll be able to do that. So that's taking place on Thursday and Friday of this week.
Student activities, senior class student council is hosting a blood drive on Thursday and our goal this year is to get a hundred pints of blood, which is pretty cool. Winter Fest is being planned right now, which is our substitute for turnabout. It's a casual winter dance. That's going to be on February 20th. And I know our exec board, our student council exec board, they go around and they ask for a lot of like food donations from local restaurants and that's something that draws a lot of students to it, because everybody likes food. And our first class program, the hashtag VH Gives Support Lesson took place the week before finals week and it was a success. We gave out goodie bags to all the students in the school that had like candy and stickers and kind of encouragement for finals week. For fine arts, our winter play Twelve Angry Jurors is taking place on Valentine's Day weekend. We're actually having four shows because it's double cast. So there's going to be a four o'clock and a 7:30 on Friday and then a 7:30 on Thursday and Saturday. So if you want a whole weekend full of court case shows.
Just go and see their show and then our show.
Then we also have our student-directed one act plays on February 25th and 26th at 7:30. Our choir festival happened on January 20th and it went really well. And that's when middle schoolers come for the day and they work with our choirs and our choir director. And we put together a concert, which it's really cool. There's three pieces that include all the middle school choirs and all the high school choirs, so it's a mass choir of almost 400 people. And then our symphony orchestra had the honor to perform at Midwest Clinic, which was a little while ago, and that was a big success from what I've heard.
All right, moving on to news from various clubs in the high school. Our academic bowl team placed second in their division last Saturday at the Fremd Invitational Tournament, in which varsity teams from 60 different high schools competed. And our math team will be hosting their final North Suburban Conference meet of the year next Wednesday, February 3rd, here at the high school. After, after the meet, they will have the ICTM Regional Meet in the end of February and then following that will be the state final meet that will be downstate at U of I in the beginning of May. And FBLA, our Future Business Leaders of America chapter, we had the area competition in, at Warren Township High School this past Saturday as well. We have 53 members compete, which is one of the largest chapters that attended the Northern Area Conference. And we had 53 members compete in 28 different individual and team events, 51 of whom placed in the top 10 in their events, which is a massive success for the chapter. And eight individuals came home with first-place medals. So they all came home with gold. Junior Nathan Ju was elected Northern Area Treasurer and Junior Ashwini Despande was elected Northern Area Secretary as well. So we have a lot of representation from our high school in the, in the FBLA community. And moving on to sports news, Vernon Hills senior Noah Agnew signed earlier this month with the University of Memphis to continue his track and field career next year there. And as the state runner-up in the high jump last year as a junior, Agnew is one of the most accomplished athletes in the history of Vernon Hills Track and Field, so that's really exciting for, he'll be doing great things there next year in Memphis. At the Leiden Invitational Wrestling Tournament a couple of weeks ago, senior Connor Wood took first place individually in his weight class. He pinned his opponent from Maine East in the finals in under three minutes. And District 128 Special Olympics teams competed at the Area Winter Games on January 9th. Eight individuals took gold in their events and will move on to the state winter games in Galena February 2nd, 4th. And varsity and JV proms both received second place at sectionals earlier this week, or last week. Moving on to state this Thursday.
Are we sure we didn't miss anything? And we have more to come yet, but we, I, if I can, you know, we'll ask you this question as we have every month, but just going back to the rollout of the technology and the continued use of the technology, is that still continuing to go well? What kind of feedback are you getting from your classmates regarding anything related to that?
Well, I would say that it's going really well and I've noticed that a lot more teachers are starting to utilize all the different ways and methods. Just one thing that kind of came to mind for me with listening to the presentation and everything is that I know that we have like a lot of older teachers in our district too. And I noticed that like most of the teachers who are up there are like the younger generation. And I know that's great because they're going to continue on for hopefully a long time at our school. But something to keep in mind is that like thinking about some of the teachers at our school that are like my parents' age, I know that like my parents aren't all that tech-savvy. So I just like hope that you guys keep in mind those other teachers who might be struggling with the technology a little bit more and might need a little bit more extra help and who may be benefiting from conferences such as the summit as well. Because maybe they need that even more than the younger teachers because the younger teachers can pick up on it quickly. But just, just to keep in mind, I don't know.
Well, actually, that's a great connect of dots because that's why we have an individual at both schools that is down in the hotspot at Vernon Hills. So teachers can walk in in an environment that's comfortable for them, not in an embarrassing situation, and get some assistance. So that was one of the things in the proposal that we felt very strongly about and fortunately the board supported with those two positions. So I think, you know, your point is spot on as somebody that's one of those older folks, so.
Well, I think it's interesting from the standpoint, obviously there's a perception and sometimes perception is reality regarding people who are more at or using it and those that aren't. And I thank you for sharing that perception because that's, you see things too that I think are helpful for all of us, so thanks.
Yeah, one other thing I want to say is I've noticed one of the big things that a lot of the teachers have been using this year especially is like Google Classroom and a lot of, like they were saying, a lot of different like Google applications and such. And it's made everyone's backpacks so much lighter. Because you know, like solar problems are going to be an issue for us 20 years down the road. But yeah, it's really nice, you know, how much they've, just about all of them have embraced it and it's made organization a lot easier as far as everything's online, everything's easy to keep track of and a lot of other things. So it's, it's, it's a big relief, I think.
I noticed you guys are all paid for listening to reports.
And then going off of Google Classroom, I have an AP Psych teacher and she was missing just today actually because I think she's a young baby and he probably got sick or something and I got like an email from her at 2:00 in the morning where she like posted like a Google Classroom thing, so I feel like she was off. But it was really cool because she like posted like videos to it and it was of her. I think she had it from like previous years, but it was of her teaching the lesson. So I thought that was a cool way when your teacher's not there, instead of doing busy work, you're actually having a lesson and learning. So that was a really unique way to just like not fall behind in your class, especially with it being an AP class, it's really important to stay on schedule. So I thought that was an interesting use of the technology.
So I'll ask a left hand fellow in the room, do we envision a time where we won't have snow days?
Well, there's three, there are three districts, there are three districts in the state right now that are piloting that, although the winter's not really cooperating to allow the pilot this year and I'm not complaining about that, but you know, we've had a fairly mild winter, but there are three districts. I think one is in Southern Illinois, one's in Central Illinois, there's one up here in the Northern Illinois area that are actually piloting that this year where education would go on, the teachers would be teaching via technology and I'm sure they picked three districts that, you know. Yeah, can actually do it, can actually make it happen, so.
To have the connectivity in your house.
Yeah, so I think it's coming. I mean, I, I think we're coming. Libraries, you know, I mean, there are other areas possibly, so just another application of the technology, absolutely.
Yeah, I had a teacher in my sophomore year that did that. If we get a snow day or any unexpected day in the school, he'd tell us in the beginning of the year, he's like, if school gets canceled, I'm posting something on my Facebook page or I'll email it to you and you have to do the assignment.
Yeah.
And I really did it because we're really lucky.
And just to add with like, I think that the Chromebooks and Google Classroom specifically that they mentioned, it essentially helps with the efficiency of like clubs too. Like you don't think of, like you think it helps with like every class, which it does, but knowing like being a part of student council and Slant of Light, we use Google Classroom a lot, like it's for submissions. This is our first year where we're actually accepting submissions from, through Google Classroom, which makes it like more anonymous. And it's just easier too because kids are already on Google Classroom. And as opposed to years past where they've had individually email one teacher or like print out a hard copy and like put it somewhere. So it just makes like clubs and submissions work easier, more easily. And student council with our various, like we have so many surveys for members and different announcements like during the weekend and stuff that just automatically sends an email to every student's notebook, so that helps a lot.
That's great. One more, need to come it down here.
In addition to that, there's also, there's a lot of apps that teachers use that like cross into a lot of different classes for review and stuff like Kahoot, I don't know if you guys use that. And Padlet and fun things like that. And students get like really excited about it because people just like kind of working as a class and doing like, there's fun things where you can draw and like stuff like that and they carry into math and languages. So you can review and it's fun to kind of move on from like Jeopardy and games that we've been playing our whole lives to prepare for tests and to do new stuff.
So can I ask two other questions?
Yeah, go.
Just two other quick questions. So I mean, Ethan, I'm referring to some of these older people here like myself. Just learning how to use all that, I mean, Google Classroom, I wouldn't have a clue how to get into that or whatever that is. I mean, is this changing, like do we do a freshman orientation day where the first thing you do when you come in is you get used to all this stuff or?
It's in Link Crew, they are.
Yeah, is that where it's at?
Yeah.
So we do have freshman orientation and they do, freshmen all get connected, get their Chromebooks obviously, get connected so that they hit the ground running. Like their Link Crew, we have a freshman.
But it's just kind of like changed the whole agenda for what we had to do just to get everybody sort of speed. And then I'm sure, I'm sure frankly, there's a whole spectrum of capabilities amongst our student body population with respect to doing all too, which I think we got to be sensitive to as well.
Yeah. The one thing it does do though is, you know, Google Classroom's primarily built as a learning management system. And all these young people, when they go away to college, they're going to use a learning management system of some sort. So it prepares them and the way they organize themselves and the way they interact with their instructors and all that, it's, it's, it's great preparation for what you're going to see later and as you enter college.
But Sean mentioned during his presentation, the LHS and VHH tech coaches have collaborated on D-128 university module for teachers that they want to roll out and they are focusing on these Google apps for education, including, including the classroom to help some of those teachers who, you know, need a little bit more support with it to learn in a flexible delivery model. So those have videos, they'll have drop-ins in the LED and hotspots and they have a number of different ways for teachers to participate in the university class and earn D-128 continuing education credits too and stuff.
Do we envision a lot of our testing moving on to the electronic platforms? Not the, you know, standardized testing, but I mean, I don't think Kirsten's had anything but a computer test all year, so. Yeah. Okay. I wouldn't be surprised to.
A lot of our finals were on, like Mastery Manager app on here.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah. Websites, like ExamLogIn.com is one that I don't, Mr. Kevir has been using since like three years ago.
That sounds good.
That's cool because there's a way to do it without being able to access other tabs on the internet.
Yeah.
So that's like a really interesting feature. I just learned about that the other day, that you're just like, you're basically logged off of the computer, but just in the app, so you can't do anything else without.
It's also nice because you get like direct feedback, so.
That's the thing, it gets you great right away, almost, right?
Yeah.
That's what I say to my kids, they get, they take a test, they're great before dinner, right? It's pretty, like, I guess that's good, I don't know.
Hopefully that's good.
It should be good. All right, so wow, that was pretty exciting. This is just an incredible year. I just keep going back to that same thing. I don't know, some of us have been doing this for a while, I just don't really remember a year quite like this. Maybe, maybe I'm missing something, but I just, I just feel this year is different. And it's pretty exciting. All right.
Superficial training. Okay, believe it or not, there is more good news. There are a couple of, that our students mentioned that I'll hit some names and make sure we have both schools, so forgive any repetitiveness here, but in the interest of making sure that we do recognize everyone. It's been an incredible month. And it's 2000 districts, 2016 districts with best teacher rankings niche. A national school ranking organization has named community high school District 128 teachers the ninth best in the entire United States. That's out of 10,538 school districts across the country. On the state level, combined Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School teachers were ranked fourth in the state of Illinois. The niche ranking provides a comprehensive assessment of the teachers and school districts across the country and takes into account such key factors as the academic performance of schools and index of teacher salaries, student teacher ratio, as well as student and parent reviews. So congratulations to our rock star teaching staff here. Yeah, that really does. So Janet Moreno, we're very proud of the teachers in your building and the work that you guys continue to do at the building will serve our students. LHS senior Nia McLendon was named to the 2015-16 Daily Herald Lake County Leadership Team, just mentioned earlier, in addition, VHHS seniors Emily Fagel, who's down at the end, our own, so to speak, and Zachary Kurzenberger and LHS senior Danielle Verba were named Lake County Leadership Team Honorable Mention. And they keep up the long tradition of LHS and VHHHS being recognized at the county level. The District 128 Foundation for Learning continued its mission of enhancing learning in District 128 by awarding innovation grants totaling. in District 128 by awarding innovation grants totaling twenty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars to LHS and VHHs teachers earlier this month. The two thousand fifteen sixteen grant winners were announced and celebrated at a luncheon held at District 128 Administrative Office in Vernon Hills recently. This year's grants brought the amount of grants awarded by the foundation since two thousand eight to one hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and all told, uh, it's nearly two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars if you combine black grants, uh, that they provide, uh, the buildings for teaching and learning and support for students in need, and, um, many of us, uh, remember about twelve years ago when the foundation started with zero dollars and, um, funded the first year of grants really through trustee donations, so, I mean, they have done an incredible job. This year's, uh, grants recipients were from VHHs Mark Prosize, Sarah Staub, Matt McCarty, John Pagani, Cedric Greenwell, Chris Wolfe, Brooke Gabris, Shannon Ettnier, Brandon Waters, and from LHS Sherry Rooks, John Taylor, Margaret Nicholson, Pete Dawson, Robert Adams, Daniel Truptau, and David Kreutz, and, um, for those of us that have been to that event and we actually listened to summaries of the innovation grant proposals that were awarded, phenomenal, um, proposals from the teachers, uh, grant proposals to really take teaching and learning to the next level, so we're very appreciative of the foundation's work with us. Longtime LHS cross-country and track coaches Harry Carlson and Bill Dorch have been selected for induction to the Lake County High School Hall of Fame. The induction ceremony will be Saturday, February sixth, at the College of Lake County. It will take place between the CLC Women and Men's Basketball Double Header at approximately two P M. LHS baseball coach Jim Schur has been named Coach of the Year at the high school level for the positive impact that he's made towards his player, players and the sport of baseball. Coach Schur received this honor through the Keep Swinging Foundation, a charitable arm of Dream Big Athletics in Palatine. The purpose of this foundation is to touch people's lives in a positive way through baseball and softball. Dream Big Athletics currently has seventeen teams called the Illinois Patriots, ranging from twelve U to eighteen U. LHS baseball coach Sean Farrell was recently honored as Assistant Coach of the Year by the Illinois High School Coaches Baseball Association. Sean was recognized for his work as a, as an assistant coach for LHS for the past, um, fourteen years. During that time, Sean has served as a varsity assistant and also the freshman A coach. Sean was presented with this award at the IHS BCA banquet on January twenty-third in Lombard. LHS applied technology teacher Robert Kelch was named last week's Classic Teacher of the Week. He was nominated by his student senior Amy Flanagan, who said, "Mr. Kelch exemplifies every aspect of a great teacher in and out of school." Kelch teaches auto one, auto two, advanced auto, woods one, woods two, and electronics at LHS. As a weekly winner, he will receive dinner for four at Donati's Pizza and is eligible for additional prizes in a monthly and annual drawing. The Classic Teacher of the Week, which recognizing, recognizes outstanding teachers in Lake County, is sponsored by one oh two point three XLC Radio, Classic Toyota, and Classic Kia. As noted a little earlier, the District 128 Special Olympics Team had a very busy January. The Black Storm and White Storm basketball teams recently competed at the area tournament at Hershey High School and came away with third and fourth place finishes. On January ninth, the team members took to the snow in their snowshoes at our area Winter Games at Lamb's Farm in Libertyville. Eight of our athletes won gold in the races to qualify for the state Winter Games in Galena on February two through four. This ties the team's all-time record for state qualifiers for the Winter Games. D-128 state qualifiers were LHS students Joseph Mahler, Austin Yosenhaus, Mallory Marvin, Michelle Shepley, Eric Hatterland, and VHHs students Alex Aquinde, Patrick Sanchez, and Nathan Farrar, so congratulations to all of them. LHS juniors Ashley Jukic, Anna Lily Dahl, and Morgan Paul recently had work published in Teen Inc. Their pieces were not only published on the website, they received the Editor's Choice designation. Ashley's piece is titled "I Live My Life Through," Anna's is titled "It's A Journey, Not A Destination," and Morgan's piece is titled "The Final Splash." Teen Inc. is a national teen magazine book series and website devoted entirely to teenage writing, art, photos, and forums. Congratulations to LHS two thousand thirteen graduate Patrick Slate on being named to Forbes Magazine Thirty Under Thirty for Healthcare. Patrick, twenty-one, is a senior at the University of Illinois and is co-founder of Psionic, whose mission is, uh, to be able to develop high-quality prosthetic hands at a low cost, making them accessible to those in developing nations. While at LHS, he participated in the Project Lead The Way program, just incredible, it is great news. Congratulations to VHHs two thousand five graduate, uh, as we mentioned earlier, Jessica Charella on the recent release of her debut novel, And Again. And LHS students named January Students of the Month include Olivia Cherry, Merrick Fackert, Anna Walski, Laya Haddon, Lauren Brennan, Alex Karonis, Brandon Brown, Tobias Cruz, Derek Joseph, and Carson Denver. So, congratulations to all our students again for just amazing accomplishments on virtually every level that you could be involved in, very, very proud of all of you. Uh, we had, uh, three donations, uh, that we want to acknowledge this month. First, we'd like to acknowledge Mr. and Mrs. Kevin McCormick, they donated a nineteen ninety-nine Mercedes SUV ML three twenty automobile to Vernon Hills High School, um, I'm assuming that, uh, John won't be driving that, that will be used in the auto shop.
I'm working on it right now.
If you are driving it, John, please come over and give me a ride, okay? Uh, the next donation is from, uh, the Opitz family, and, uh, they have, um, donated a new tool cabinet, nine toolkits, and an onboard diagnostic scanner to the Applied Tech Department at Vernon Hills High School. Um, again, or, or also, we want to acknowledge a generous donation of twenty customized Mizunu backpacks to the Vernon Hills, uh, High School volleyball team, so thank you for your generosity. And last but not least is former board member, administrator, and teacher in District 128, Judy Sugarman. Uh, we want to thank Judy for her donation of a Sole, S-O-L-E, F-sixty-five treadmill to be used by the Athletic Department at Vernon Hills High School, and again, John, I'll be over to try that out. Yeah, it's in your office right now, so thanks to Judy for her donation. As a formal note, your packet this evening, we had three FOIA requests this month, and next on the superintendent's agenda, as Pat mentioned early, uh, every six months, we review closed session minutes from past years, we make a recommendation, uh, to the board on whether to release any of those minutes, uh, or to keep them confidential at this point, and after review this month, we are recommending that we do not release, uh, any of the amendments, so that would be our recommendation, so we would be, um, we would need a motion to essentially not release any of the closed session minutes, uh, this time, and then we need a second, and I'm assuming a vote, Denise, yes?
Can I make a motion that we keep the closed session minutes closed? That would be the next one.
Any discussion? I have one quick question, is, is there like a statute of limitations on these things or can they just be under wraps forever? I'm just curious, because that is sounding pretty stale.
Pretty much.
Home style was, but I just wanted to ask.
Uh, there's no statute of limitations, but, you know, they, they do need to be looked at and released at some point when they're no longer necessary to be kept confidential.
Okay, so if you recall, uh, six months ago, we released, uh, a number of those on the past period, so...
Okay, so, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Fowley?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the superintendent's, uh, um, report tonight is, you know, the Brainerd property parking agreement with the First Presbyterian Church of Libertyville. Uh, just as a short overview for, uh, the community, uh, we've had a long arrangement with the First Presbyterian Church to, um, essentially share parking at Brainerd, that agreement has worked, uh, very well for the church, it's been, uh, very navigable for us, and, uh, so that's been a great partnership with the reconfiguration of the, uh, Brainerd property. Uh, we moved the parking down to the end, uh, the church and the district were interested in continuing that arrangement, so, um, our lawyer, Rick, um, I was deciding whether to call you counsel or a lawyer, Rick, so, uh, anyway, uh, Rick has been working with counsel from the church, uh, as the board knows from our monthly updates, and we've navigated all the waters as I reported at the, uh, P and P meeting earlier this month, and, uh, we've come to an agreement, the board had, also had an opportunity to review that agreement, uh, Rick and I are very comfortable with that, uh, the church board has already passed their end of the agreement, so our recommendation is we pass, uh, the parking agreement as, uh, discussed and submitted, uh, at P and P. Uh, we could have done this on the consent agenda, but again, it's a unique partnership with one of our community, um, organizations, um, in a, in an area that we both serve, and we thought we wanted to highlight it in the superintendent's report tonight, so, uh, we would need, uh, a motion and a second, any discussion and then a vote on the agreement as we've presented it.
I move to accept a parking agreement with the First Presbyterian Church of Libertyville.
Second, any discussion? Roll call.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delly Fowley?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Munstead?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mark, you want to give a brief, uh, Brainerd property update?
Oh, yes, uh, the Brainerd property, the parking lot is open for the students now so they can use it, uh, for parking during the day, uh, walkover school. We're, the contractors in the process of finalizing all the punch lists, um, so we can move forward with occupancy with the ROE, um, our goals to have the building and the turf, um, everything is to be completed that we can, so just bring sports start that we can utilize the facility.
Nothing but positive comments in the community that I hear, I don't know what you guys hear, but I got all kinds of people calling me.
I hear the same thing.
Yeah, you know, the, the comments are now, it's almost like, I can't believe we waited this long to do this, so, I think it looks great.
Well, as we were mentioning before the board meeting, if you're driving east on one seventy-six at the right time of day, we actually get the benefit of having the effect of the building on the property looking like it has a steeple, because it's almost perfectly lined up with the church, so, um, yeah, I think that community comments that I've received as I've been around the community of different things, um, have also been very positive, and it's going to serve our kids really well. When the weather breaks in the spring, we're going to be able to get kids on that field immediately in, in multiple sports, um, and I think it's very exciting for everyone involved, so...
And I think some of the, the last minute changes we made to the shed helped a lot.
That was great.
We're continuing to look into the fencing.
Right, the area.
On budget, under budget, which really is free.
Uh, presently, we're on budget.
Kind of asked a question along, if I throw that.
That's good. Okay, um, number seven, uh, I actually had stated the district down, and part of that was to, um, update the board on where the state might be right now, um, which is tenuous, of course, as we all know, and this week it looks, it's, it's apparent that there may be some movement, um, at least in pensions and school reform, uh, funding reforms, so, uh, I'd like to hold off until February, February and see if we have any move, more movement down in the state, but Pat had mentioned earlier that we've had an incredible, uh, year, and we really have had an incredible year across the board this year. Uh, if you go back over the last twelve years or so, we've, we are just on a roll, and, uh, that is in large part because, you know, we've set great broad goals, we've got really good school improvement plans that are driven on the needs of the student, we've set very high expectations for ourselves, uh, we collect data, we hold ourselves accountable, and we look at how we can do things better, and the result, as you've seen over the last few months and the last several years, has been, uh, continual increase in student achievement, um, and we're also in very good financial position, and so there's some things briefly that I think we need to highlight year over year, kind of as benchmark, uh, places to be, but I'd like to hold off on that until February, see if we have a little more movement in state when we look at some of the challenges that we're going to be facing moving forward at the board level, and I think in February at, uh, F and F, we'll dig in a little deeper to some of the work that Yaz and I have done over the last year and a half on potential property tax freeze, the impact of that, if the pension cost shift came, um, if some other factors happened as a result of ultimately a budget, uh, deal in Springfield, um, so, uh, the board's aware and the community's aware that there are other dynamics, uh, out there that the board and the administration have to plan for, uh, not only next year, but ten years and maybe fifteen years down the line, uh, depending, so I'll come back in February and, and hit some high points there, certainly not a presidential State of the Union, but really some bullet points just to, uh, amplify, um, some what we think are, are key points. What I'd like to conclude my report, uh, with tonight is something that the board heard at, uh, the F and F meeting, facility, or P and P meeting in January, and that is, um, North Chicago is continuing to wrestle with some, uh, difficult financial problems, um, in their district, and so, um, a question, uh, the board might have or a community member might have is, that's really unfortunate, but a lot of other school districts are struggling in the state, why does that matter to us and why are we talking about it at one of our board meetings? We're talking about it at our board meeting because we are a contiguous district in North Chicago, so the districts that are contiguous are Waukegan, which is a unit district, would be Woodland Elementary District up in Gurnee, Warren Township High School, Oak Grove, okay, District One, Libertyville High School or District 128, and then Lake Bluff Elementary and Lake Forest Elementary. So, if the problems would become significant enough at Lake, or at, um, North Chicago, that they were not able to continue as a school district at some point, the contiguous districts would be directly impacted by that. Um, some folks that have paid attention to that issue over the years, remember twelve, thirteen years ago, uh, about the time I was coming to the district, Congressman Porter had, um, crafted a one-off agreement only for the Great Lakes Naval Base in North Chicago, which would allow in essence super funding, uh, from the, uh, federal government for the North Chicago school districts because it's serving military kids, but it lowered the required threshold from fifty percent to twenty percent of the kids, it's the only base in the country that has that low of threshold. That has had to been, that agreement has needed to be renewed several times, uh, first when, um, Senator Kirk was Congressman Kirk, and then Congressman Doltz first time, um, in office, and every time that's happened, it's garnered a lot of public attention, a lot of public debate, a lot of public conversation, and a lot of angst, uh, for the folks in North Chicago, uh, who are trying to maintain their own local school district and also the contiguous districts. So, there are some dynamics that have happened recently, um, that, um, could put North Chicago in real, um, critical mass danger, um, in the next few years, and so I wanted to spend a little time tonight, the board, again, the board has heard this, but really for the community, uh, moving forward, and also to let you know that the other districts involved in this are also beginning to inform their boards and communities, because this is going to be more of a public, um, discussion, uh, moving forward in the near future. Um, there was a meeting held recently at North Chicago hosted by the North Chicago Board of Education, um, and their executive director, because they're under state control at, uh, this point, um, which really looked at, uh, the issue of charter schools in North Chicago, um, and there were about four hundred people at the meeting, about half were in favor of charter schools, about half wanted to keep the district intact as, as it is and not allow expansion of charter schools, um, in North Chicago. Amazingly, there were no media at that meeting, which still, uh, astounds me, but the essence of the problem at this point is there are several factors that have come together, um, to, uh, really impact North Chicago, um, down the line. The first is Learn Charter, which is a charter school organization that has a footprint in North Chicago right now, serving, uh, the neighborhood of five hundred students, uh, at the elementary level, um, and Learn also has a footprint up in Waukegan, and then I think in the city of Chicago, it's a pretty large charter organization. They have notified North Chicago that they want to expand their footprint, another five hundred students in North Chicago, which will give them approximately a thousand students out of thirty-five hundred to thirty-eight hundred students in that district, so almost a third of the students, um, in the district. Um, that will create, uh, some significant problems for North Chicago School District, uh, with that, uh, number of kids out and the money that follows them. Um, in addition to that, uh, the state has notified North Chicago, for the past couple of years, they have given North Chicago a special appropriation, which is over and above the normal amount of state funding that you get, uh, per student, uh, based on your enrollment. The state has notified them that, um, they're going to have to dial that back, roll that back, and that's not going to be viable moving forward, even though they have demonstrated some real progress, particularly at the high school level, over the last couple of years. If the number of military kids in the system drops below 20%, because remember, that's kind of that one-off threshold that they established for North Chicago, which will happen if the Learn Charter becomes its own LEA or local education agency, if they become large enough, or they apply for that status to essentially become their own school district, within the school district, so to speak. Those two funding pieces are critical to keep North Chicago moving forward. The state superintendent and Dr. Martindale, the executive director, have tried to bargain a scaled-down compromise with Learn Charter for the second charter school, which would involve fewer kids in the second charter, thus leaving the percentage of military kids in District 127, which is North Chicago, above the required 20% federal super impact aid level. The compromise would allow District 187 to continue on as a regular school district longer, but not forever, given the potential impact of increased charter costs. So, remember the concept with charter schools, you open a charter, that money follows the students, and so, it's a pretty large piece of the pie. Learn Charter rejected that compromise offer and will likely initiate the process to fully expand their charter in District 187. In fact, on February 4th, the current board at North Chicago will consider Learn Charter's expansion proposal, and then will make a decision whether to support that proposal or not to support that proposal. So, they're reviewing the additional Learn Charter expansion proposal, and they're going to make a decision on February 4th. If the D 187 board rejects the expansion proposal as allowed under state law, Learn Charter may then appeal to the Illinois Charter School Commission, which will certainly override the District 187 board rejection and allow the second Learn Charter to proceed. And there's nothing to prevent Learn Charter, the following year, from continuing to expand that charter. So, you see how that snowball rolls and the additional dollars that, you know, are taken away from the remaining students in the district. If District 187 loses the state's special appropriation and federal super impact aid, District 187 will likely not be able to continue as a local school district, and this would happen sooner rather than later, not tomorrow, but, you know, if there was a three- to five-year timeline for them to survive financially, this would certainly up that timeline. The contiguous district superintendents have already had one meeting, which included Executive Director Martindale. We have a second meeting next week where we'll have more information probably about where the board is leaning at District 187 on the second charter. And then, what we're going to begin to do is, we're going to be able, we're going to begin to work the problem. We're going to look back at the original agreement, which was passed by all the contiguous district school boards to allow the reduction in impact aid 12 or 13 years ago. We'll have attorneys review that for us as well, and then we're going to look at all the possible options moving forward. Certainly, in District 187, and I think I can speak for all the contiguous districts, our first shot out of the box would be to allow District 187 to continue as a local school, supporting their local kids. But in the event that that might not happen, we cannot wait until a possible decision is made, let's say, April one year, and the following year, we have to figure out how we're going to make all that work. So, we're going to begin to work the problem on several levels moving forward, in the spirit of cooperation and, you know, trying to look at all the positive ways that we can work the problem. And then, I will be continuing to update the board and our local community, as well as the other superintendents, as we move forward. So, just wanted you to be aware that that's out there. Certainly want to make sure that folks understand that we are not raising a panic flag at all, but there are simply a set of dynamics here that could have us as a significant enough impact on District 187 that we would have to look at the impact that that would have on the contiguous districts. And we're all involved in that process, just not just District Oak Grove, it's all of the contiguous districts. And so, we'll, you know, work the problem, look at all possible options and solutions with the idea of a worst-case scenario, if it came to the fact that North Chicago could no longer continue, then what would we do? And there's also state statute that would cover that, I mentioned the original agreement. So, there are a number of factors that we're going to need to look at that also underpin this. And we'll do all of those things in the coming months. If there's a better solution here in the next few months, working with Learn Charter, the compromise goes through, that will lessen the pressure. But again, that in itself will not allow North Chicago to continue on infinitum because of the loss of the state special appropriation and the potential loss of federal impact aid. Those are significant dollars for a district that does not have a strong property base to support their local schools. So, with that said, I would ask the board, it's a couple times you've heard this now, do you have any questions at this point or comments? But again, we just want to get that out on the table, we want to be transparent upfront about that, and, you know, we'll work the problem and see where that takes us.
Can I ask, is one of the questions, if somehow the district ends up dissolving, does, and being absorbed by the surrounding contiguous districts, does Learn Charter, they're tied to that district, right? So, then what happens to their charter school? Does it, what?
Well, that would...
It could take our money.
My guess is...
If they're no longer defined, that district, if they're ours, what would happen after our charter?
Well, what they, what they would likely do, Karen, is they would apply to be a local education agency, their own LEA. So, that, let's say, the thousand students that they serve, okay, they would become their own local district, and once you become an LEA, okay, then you can issue property tax, I mean, they become a, they become a school district.
But that, that little district would be in that area.
Right.
Become then also open to the other contiguous districts.
That's a question, that's a question that we would have to resolve, but the concern is right now is, if they become their own LEA, then they get the tax dollars as an LEA.
Then we get our, right now, well...
So, you know, if they become their own school district, that charter, they now become a school district with any footprint of North Chicago, then that property tax base that they serve in North Chicago would then become their property tax base, just like a regular school district. The rest of the district outside that footprint would be, would be dissolved into, you know, potentially the other districts, or if there's another solution. So, those will be some of the questions that will raise. This doesn't happen every day in Illinois where a school district dissolves, but most people are aware that a school board can, a school board can meet any night and dissolve their school district, you know, after going through a process. So, unfortunately, with the state of the finances in Illinois, it's highly likely over the next couple of years that we're going to be, we will see, North Chicago will not be the only casualty. Certainly, North Chicago and East St. Louis probably have the most, outside of the city of Chicago, have the most significant struggles at this point, but there are many, many other school districts in the state that are hanging on by their fingernails right now. So, that's a great question, and that's one we'd have to run down, you know, working with the state and also working with legal counsel.
So, President, if they become an LEA and they have geographical boundaries, are they going to be obliged then to pick up things like special ed and other essential services?
If they become an LEA, Alex, you would assume that that was the case, because now they are a recognized school district, right, as an LEA? So, a reference point for a community, LEA, District 128 is an LEA, we are a local education agency. District 73, 72, Oak Grove are all their own LEAs. So, that's a great question, and one could assume if they became their own LEA, you know, they might decide to further expand their footprint to North Chicago proper, you know, the school district now, and then they essentially take over the schools. But if that happens, to your question, you know, are they taking kids with special needs? Are they taking kids who are reading below grade level, have other issues that they're dealing with, which has been part of the argument against some of the charter schools in Illinois, that they don't take all of the students that a public, you know, public institution is required to take? So, that's a great question. One would assume that that's the case if they become an LEA. I think the other interesting question is, is it profitable for them to become an LEA if they have to serve the greater good of all the students in a particular area?
They don't have to become an LEA, right?
Yeah.
Do they have to become an LEA? Do they don't have to?
No, no.
Has any other...
Which will go to Karen's question. They didn't become an LEA, and somehow the district had to be, you know, broken apart, and statute guides us, or the original agreement guides us, or an agreement guides us on how we're going to do that, then there would have to be, you know, part of that agreement would be, how do the funds go to the charter schools? Okay, what about the physical plant?
Or they're, they pull them up?
Yeah.
They then, they get pulled from, or, or, why is there students don't want to go there anymore? Because they know they can go, I mean, yeah.
So, yeah, there are...
It sounds like they're going to take on their debt, too.
There are lots of questions there moving forward, and, you know, you can do this in an academic exercise, which on some level, we will do this, but at the heart of all of this is, we've got a group of students in a community that it appears would prefer, as almost any community would, to have their kids in their local schools, you know, in their own neighborhood schools. So, you know, we'll just have to see how this plays out. Again, it's not going to happen tomorrow, we're not raising a panic flag, we're approaching this very kind of judiciously, and as soon as Dr. Martindale had the information that he has that I've shared tonight, we had our first meeting and came back to our January board meeting cycle and began to share that information out. So, we just want to, again, work the problem effectively with the idea that, you know, if a worse, if, you know, kind of the worst-case scenario is that the district can't continue on, then those children have to be served, and they have to, and they should be served well, obviously. So, again, just wanted to keep, you know, high plane of awareness there. Oh, one other question, before Jim raises this question, that a couple of people have actually asked me, and this question also came up in detachments and deannexation, really from one of our sister districts in the area. So, what happens if we don't have room for whatever kids that we would have to take? It's too bad, we're going to have to make room. It's just as if we had 120 kids show up brand-new this year to Libertyville High School. Okay, we can't say that we don't have room for you. Once they are in our district, then we have to serve those students, okay? So, as we look at that outcome, all of the contiguous districts would have to weigh that out, because eventually, we're going to have to figure out, where are we going to put these kids when, you know, if they were actually to come to us, so we can serve them well. So, there are all kinds of associated, really practical questions like that moving forward, but we wanted to start the dialogue with the superintendents, we'll be involving Yazman and her colleagues at the districts in North Chicago as part of this conversation, Royce Lee, the regional superintendent, will be involved, and her staff in this conversation as well, as we begin to go through this process. So, way more unanswered questions than there are answers right now, but we'll try and find all the questions that need to be answered, we'll work that list and start to look at possibilities. So, Jim, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
So, has any other charter organization in the community formed an LEA that we're aware of?
You know, I don't know that, Jim. That's a good question, and I honestly, I don't know the answer to that, but that's one of the things that we'll be talking about next week moving forward. I think, you know, the biggest model to look at would be Chicago, and that's obviously because of the massive size of CPS. There are a number of charter school companies that are working in Chicago Public School area. To my knowledge, none of them have formed their own LEA, but again, I don't know the answer definitively.
They're very different animals.
Yeah, to that question, and what the process would be for them to do that. Again, would that be profitable for them to do that? You know, if they don't have the latitude that charter schools have, you know, they don't have the mandates we have in many cases, and...
They're for profit.
Yeah, they're all, yeah, they're for-profit businesses. So, you know, we'll just have to see how that plays out, okay? So, just wanted you to know, we're on top of it, we're all on top of it, we're working it. There may be, I've mentioned this to Pat before, at some point down the road, we may want to form a working group that includes a board member from each one of the boards, including North Chicago, of course, North Chicago, so we can begin to look at some of these options. So, what will not happen, I can assure you, at some point, is that we decide we want to do this, and we get to do it, and Lake Forest decides they want to do that, and they get to do that, and Warren decides they want to do whatever, Waukegan, whatever we decide to do is going to have to be in the boundaries of either the original agreement, which had a breakup formula in it, current state statute, a combination of the two, and, you know, whatever that agreement is, we're all going to be part of that agreement, we're not going to get to selectively choose what we do moving forward. So, that's why I think it's important for the superintendents and finance people to kind of front the problem, and then, you know, we'll obviously need to bring our boards in, including you, at some point in that discussion. But as you know, we can't do that effectively by having, you know, a massive workshop with all of the school boards. That's not a practical application, so we might get to the point where we have a working superintendent, board, school finance group that's looking at all of this and weighing all this out. But for now, we're ringing the bell, doing some transparent notification, kind of identifying what the potential causes are, and that we're going to be looking at it moving forward, okay?
All right.
Any other?
I've got one other, Pat, then we can move on, and I think pretty much the board meeting's done, and when I'm done tonight, I think, so, because I did most of the report tonight. Just wanted to remind all of the folks at the table here, but any community members that might also be watching tape of this on our website, we will have a committee of the whole meeting on Monday, February 1st, okay, starting at 6 o'clock at the district office across the street in our large conference room there. And the purpose of that committee of the whole meeting is to look at major capital projects, okay? And it will be a working session of the board, as with any time the board gets together, there will be an opportunity for public comment there, but it's a working session for the board, so beyond public comment, we'll be going through several things. Among those is, we'll go back and kind of review our core mission again. We want to review the history of how we got in the position that we could look at some of the major capital project work that we'd like to do down the line. We want to do a quick review of the financial process that kind of led us here, including a discussion of the reserves, what we actually have in the reserves, and to share some of the conversation the board has had in the past about the minimum reserve level we want to keep with all the uncertainty in the state moving forward. We want to reaffirm again, it's something that the board has done, you know, a number of times, in that the board's operating philosophy is, we are not going to use reserves for our normal operating costs moving forward. And then, we also just want to quickly review the amount of abatement and reductions the board has done over the last five years, and then we'll finish that kind of introductory part with really the parameters that the board has given us at looking at the major capital projects moving forward, and that's very important, because you gave us direction on several occasions moving forward. And then, we'll begin the process of looking at those projects. Among those large capital projects are a new pool at Libertyville High School, okay, a second gym at Vernon Hills High School, and eventually, the reconfiguration of the old pool at Libertyville High School for some needs that we have there. We have worked on this, really, you could go back 10 years to when we started the 10-year rolling financial and capital plan, to be in a position to have this discussion. But the thing that's very important for the community to know is, although none of these projects have been approved by the board, they're all subject to board approval, of course, is that if any of those projects move forward, whatever level they're approved at for spending, those resources will come from existing reserves by plan, okay? They will not come through going out to the community and asking the community to raise their taxes to pay for those projects, and we, I think the board has felt very strongly about that, and we felt very strongly about that as an administration as well. So, again, Monday, February 1st, 6:00 PM, at district office across the street, okay?
So, just one question on that, because I don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Sure.
We didn't have a discussion on capital projects, but we really have to tie that to a discussion on our long-range financial picture.
Sure.
Will we have that data for this meeting?
Can share some information with you, covering until about maybe 2000, right?
Yeah, so that'd be good. So, we'd be able to essentially look at what our, I mean, what I would imagine is, we could have a page of assumptions that might say, we're going to assume a configuration is X, we're going to assume that our cost... going to assume that our costs will be what by Y, we'll assume EAB is going to whatever, those infamous curves that we used to look at.
So, we have to do the update.
That's going to tie into the whole reserve question and all that. And then can we make sure we have an updated, you know, net of early taxes? What do we, what do we have and how is that compared to our last conversation on that?
This is a good time to be here because most of our taxes are...
Most of our taxes have been collected from last year. Yeah, but we're sitting on still some, well, we have to pay the rest of the year's, this year's expenses.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, otherwise we're sitting really, really in.
Yes.
But, you know, it'd be nice to just, I mean, I think the fund balances this, this month are $130 million. So, before everybody says we've got $130 million, let's just strip out the rest of this year's budget and anything else that we got to strip out and say, okay, this is what, if the year ended today and we paid all the rest of the bills that we anticipate between now and the end of June, this is what we would have. That's really the only discussion that's with that. Okay. Is there anything else anybody wants to make sure we have?
Will we also cover property?
Yeah, the property, and the property piece of this is, at Vernon Hills and Libertyville, but particularly at Libertyville, the front part of the property at Libertyville, part of the work that we do will include a cost, you know, let's assume for a minute that we do do a pool. Whatever that pool is, we'll have build-out included in it. We've already included those costs. I mean, we could separate those two out, but whatever we do upfront there will include taking, for example, the old admin building down, reconfiguring the road, which we have to do because we've determined that, you know, the pool would go in the front of the building, down in the end of the building by the west gym, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then we'll just acknowledge again that we have parcels of property across the street in our long-term, although we may not all be here when we get all that property across the street. But the long-term prognosis is to be able to use that, you know, for additional field space, tennis courts, you know, whatever it might be for a future board and future administration down the road. So, yes, it will, to Stephen's question, will be a capital projects and property discussion. And there are also some, you know, there are also some other larger-ticket projects that we need to look at down the line that aren't necessarily building, so to speak, but just renewal things for the district and keeping ourselves up with that. So, and point out to those, again, that may be watching from the public, the board will not be making any decisions on the first. That's going to be the first of a number of conversations where we will likely, depending on time, will likely be able to do some introductory work and then provide some more detail on pool options that we've looked at, the process that we've gone through there. And following that immediately, we want to have a similar discussion with the Jim at Vernon Hills because obviously reconfiguring the old pool at Libertyville is going to be the longer term of the three potential projects because we actually have to build the new pool at Libertyville first, if, you know, as we move down that path before we can talk about reconfiguring the old pool. So, and the factors in Springfield and all of those things, as you know, Yas and I have worked numbers on property tax rates. We've worked 10-year, 12-year numbers on the pension cost shift if we do that, that you've heard us talk about before. So, all of those things are factors, you know, moving in. I can assure you that it is likely that school funding reform is going to happen this year because Callerton and Madigan have put that out there as a priority. So, it needs to be done. It's been almost 20 years. It's the worst in the country. That's going to happen. But the effect of that is we're going to lose, we're going to lose something here. It's not going to be dramatic, but we're going to lose something here because we're a district that sits with a good property tax base. So, some of the existing revenue is going to be moved around to districts of higher need. Won't be catastrophic for us, but again, over a period, as Alex has taught us, over a period of time, there's a multiplication effect on that, and we can do estimates on that. Yasmin and I, we have worked those numbers many times. So...
The article in the paper the other day suggested that when you give more of those that don't have you, but they're not going to take any from those that do.
They're going to try and do...
That just looked like a bit of a show game.
Yeah, they're going to, that was the flying the lightman last year with Senator Menard's plan. And to his credit, Senator Menard went around the entire state multiple times and sat, and I was in his group at least twice, and really wanted to understand the problem and tweak the formula. If you remember last spring, although it seems like several years ago now, if you remember last spring, the first shot of SB 1 was catastrophic for suburban districts in terms of losses. I mean, there were districts at 211, 214 that lost 15, 18, 20 million dollars. There's no way their legislators are going to vote for that. There's no way they can vote for that and be back in office. So, they understood very clearly that they had to tweak that. The second kind of go-around with that, I think we were in the probably $1.2 million category, Yas, as I recall. Originally, we were probably like 3 million. So, I think what they actually will end up doing, Pat, is getting as close to hold harmless as they can because the only way to make that work is to give, inject a lot more money into the system, the overall system, if they're going to hold everybody harmless. But I think if you look at us, Stevenson, Lake Forest, Tyler Park, Deerfield, some districts that are strong, have strong property tax bases, the adage is going to be, you know, we've got the resources locally to do what we've got, need to do at the level that historically our communities have expected us to do. So, we're going to have to make that up locally if we want to do that. So, what that damage is going to look like, you know, we don't know, but I don't think it will be catastrophic in terms of 3, 4, 5 million dollars a year. You know, I could be wrong.
Although we should do some studying of that, too. And again, I don't want to get into this. Honestly, this is a big agenda. This is more than a one-night session.
Oh, it's going to be multiple nights.
We have to think about that, but...
We're not going to come along at too hard for our...
No, no.
This will be multiple nights.
But we should probably sort of reschool ourselves because it's not just a question of money. I think, again, it gets to tax rates. And, yeah, Lake Forest has a lot of money and we have a lot of money, but our tax rate is a lot higher. My guess is the level of concern on the part of our residents is probably higher than theirs because their rate's a lot lower. So, you know, I think, I'm hoping that they're sensitive to the fact it's not just how big a check you can write, but, you know, frankly, what level of sacrifice the people in the community are making. Because I think it is higher here than it is in other places.
It is, but keeping in mind also that...
Yas, use your microphone.
Sorry. Keeping in mind also that their equalized assessment is quite high.
No, it's all because of that, yeah. That's true.
And, you know, other school districts around here have fund balances on Stevenson.
Yeah, but I mean, there are a lot, there are a lot of houses in our community that, frankly speaking, haven't appreciated for better part of 20 years, okay? And yet their tax rates have continued to rise, okay? And I think it's, you know, we've talked about it before. I think it's starting to hit a new point. We had, you know, we've got members of the community coming that can't even get anybody to look at their house, okay? And I think that's a tip of the iceberg. So, I just think we have to think about really how we need to message this to Carol and others and make them realize it's not just that we're the wealthy, you know, district in the North Shore. So, lots of education maybe there.
Okay. So, to go to Pat's point, say this one more time. What I expect is when we meet Monday, we're going to set up the next meeting, to set up the next meeting, to set up the next meeting. Because this will be, you know, a process that we go through this spring. And then, you know, we'll be in a position that hopefully along the way you'll be able to make some decisions.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes. Okay. Anyone from the public would like to speak? Let me give you guys a heads up. Really, we're going to do one of two things when we're done with public comment. We're going to cruise through the agenda, okay? Or we're going to just let you go because...
It's up to you guys. If you want to go, you can go.
Yeah, you guys know, I mean, we covered a lot of territory, which is some good stuff. I mean, looking at the agenda, the rest of it's pretty routine, so... All right, anybody from the public would like to speak tonight? Okay. We're right behind you. Okay, let's see. Consent vote agenda is listed. I have one quick, well, let's make a motion first. We did review this in committee earlier this month. So, can I ask for, actually, I've got to ask my question first since I don't want to add it afterwards. Item number 5A is the same name that is on agenda item number four, number 2A. This name is the same as this name. This one says move to full-time, this one says move to part-time. So, I just want to get that clarified before I actually move...
She was approved at the committee's for part-time. And then after the committee...
That's what I thought. So, now she's...
She was moved to full-time.
Got it. All right, so should we strike it from the consent vote agenda? Because there's a second motion on the other.
Well, because there was two separate actions. Is that right, Alan? She...
Maya.
I just want to make sure we get it right, Russell. So, let me clarify. So, when we go to the next page on PNP, we're going to have a motion to approve the employment of employees as listed, which includes hiring Myra full-time.
It's phrase, you're going to hire her part-time.
Oh, you're kind of hiring her part-time. So, she's like full-time and a part-time. I just...
We're hiring a replacement for the part-time position and then we're moving her to full-time.
Yeah, so, those are both actions.
We're hiring for the replacement of part-time and then moving her to full-time. That's how I'm reading it.
Well, they seem to seem to me, you know, educational support replacement hires, Myra, full-time. Educational support replacement hire, Myra, part-time.
Yeah, part-time happens first and moves to full-time.
Is she part-time or full-time?
So, what's happening?
She's going to be full-time and part-time.
So, she's going to be full-time, so... She's part-time.
Do I have to strike her from...
That's what I'm asking you to do.
Why don't you vote?
We're going to vote to, to hire her full-time.
You vote to remove her from the agenda. When she, when was she, John, when did she start?
She just did, so she started...
Okay, so she's part-time, so since we've had the meeting, she's moved from part-time, now she's moving to full-time.
Right. I don't think we've had a meeting since she started part-time.
Okay.
And then we had kind of a leave situation. She mediocated for the full-time we gave her.
And she got it, so...
It sounds to me like we don't need 5A.
Well, the...
But the process of...
No, 5A moves into full-time. I think the first action is the hiring action.
We're hiring her.
We're hiring her.
Then we moved her...
We hired her as part-time.
What John is saying.
And now we're moving her to full-time. So, we can't take the first one off because that's the hiring action.
The original hire.
That's the original hire.
And then the second one moves her to full-time at some future point?
No, because she's moved, she's not employed right now. I mean, if we take the first one off, she's not employed. And we've got to move to full-time.
It's just a transfer.
Oh, moved to full-time.
Yeah, so she's moving from part-time.
Okay, so you give her this as moved to full-time.
So, in other words, if you approve a consent agenda, we've hired her as a part-time employee and sets that as...
Authorizes something, right?
Yeah, authorizes the move to full-time. Okay, good question.
I want to make sure we get it right.
So, John, you'll come back next month. I put her back at part-time, okay?
I'd love to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Deli Fowley.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lunsta.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bassam.
Aye.
Deli Fowley.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Okay, quick, let's go through this before Myra thinks she's part-time.
All right.
Yeah. She's right now.
She's right now. She's right now, she's part-time.
For five minutes, she's going to remain part-time.
Okay. PNP Chairwoman Mauer.
And this is going to take a while because we do a lot of policies, so I'm sorry.
Take your time.
Okay, so we have board policies that are presented for a first reading and any discussion if you'd like to discuss. First, we have policy 2, 200, types of school board meetings. That adds, school building, safety and security is a topic that may be discussed in closed session. So, if we have any secrets that we don't want to get out to any intruders or something, we could go into closed session to discuss those. Next, policy 4, 170, safety. It adds a section on the required implementation plan of carbon monoxide alarms. Then we move to policy 660, curriculum content. And here's another unfunded mandate. It adds one semester of civics to the graduation requirements of all students beginning with incoming ninth graders, their grandfathered-in, the other ones. Then policy 6, 160, English learners. It updates all references to English learners, or EL, from English language learners, ELL. Another example of our state in, with waste, paper waste. Anyway, students, policy 7, 100, health eye and dental examinations and immunizations requires use of a certain form, the certificate of religious exemptions to be exempt from health examinations and immunizations. So, if you have students who want a religious exemption, there's a specific form they must use and have signed by your person. Policy 7, 130, student rights and responsibilities. It clarifies the right of students to voluntarily engage in prayer or religious-based meetings during non-instructional time. Policy 7, 140, search and seizure. This policy now prohibits school officials from requiring students to share his or her password to their electronic accounts. It does require the students to cooperate in an investigation involving social media activity that violates school rules, and it can require a student to share information with administrators to make a determination of misconduct. So, while they don't have to give you their password, they do have to share the site or they have to share the information that's on the site. Makes sense? Okay, then policy 7, 300, extracurricular athletics. Sections were edited to clarify the basic requirements for students to participate in school-sponsored extracurricular athletic activities. Policy 7, 305, student athlete concussions and head injuries. That is updated to reflect the changes that implement a concussion program for students and describes the components required for compliance. It's a big one. And that's it for the first reading. Questions? All right, then we move, then we move on to the educational tool requests. There are two field trips that we are being requested, so we need a motion to approve those, a second and a vote.
So, moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Grudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.